The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on October the 11th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom at the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. This meeting will be conducted by video conference with at least a quorum of Commissioner members participating in person at the County Administration Building in accordance with provisions set forth in Section 551.127 of Texas Government Code. The public may watch the meeting live on Facebook. First item on the agenda is the notification, pledge of allegiance of the U.S. and Texas flag. Commissioner Berry will lead those.
Please pray with me. Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for the many abundant blessings that you bestow upon us. Please guide us as we do the business of Brazos County and that we ask your wisdom in calling out the responsibilities that we have. I ask that you watch out for our first responders, our teachers, and our military as they keep us free. I ask you also to pray for the people of Ukraine. I ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Number two, citizen, a call for citizen input and our concern. Do we have anybody that wants to speak from the public? Okay. We'll move on to number three is discussion and approval of tax rate of .4635 for the tax year 2022.
Can we move that to a later part?
Yeah, we will skip these, this one and number four since we don't have, we're supposed to have four here to actually set a tax rate.
Okay.
Since we don't have four.
And five.
Yes, and five.
And Ralph, okay.
And we'll come back to it if we have a fourth come in on Zoom or come in. Number six is consider approval of allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funding for one or more of the projects requested totaling $42,408,941.
Move approval?
A through N.
A through N?
Yes. I second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A through N. Mr. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number seven is consider and approve, removing one or more of the submitted American Rescue Plan Act project requests from the list of our projects to be funded as follows.
Move approval, 1 through 29?
Second.
Motion made, second to approve 1 through 29. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number eight is Resolution 22-025 of the Commissioners Court of Brazos County, Texas, approving the bonds to be issued by Tarrant County Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation for the purpose of financing certain health facilities located within the boundaries of Brazos County, Texas for the benefit of Better Scott &amp; White Holdings as required by Section 147 F of the Internal Revenue Code 1986 as amended and providing an effective date.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number nine is Resolution 22-026, designating county judges the authorized official for the Indigent Defense Formally Grant Fund, designating the auditor as the financial officer for that grant.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 10 is approval of appointment of Andy R. to the Workforce Development Board with the term of June 30th, 2022 to June 30th, 2025.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I think Andy will do a great job. Glad to see the appointment.
Right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 11 is request approval of proposed road bridge 2023 holiday schedule, which is the equivalent of standard approved 96-hour 2023 county holiday schedule.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 13.
12.
Number 12 is acceptance of donated or unclaimed property left by inmates leaving Brazos County Detention Center months of February and August 2022.
Move approval, Judge? Is that between February and August or just the months of February and August and we're leaving out March, April, May, and June?
Between February and August.
Just those two months?
Just those two.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we approved the other ones last week.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 13 is approval of the following job description.
Move approval, A through E?
Oh, D. Oh, E?
A through E.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve A through E. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 14 is discuss and approve to remove salary benefits and operational costs from the following positions for February, for the fiscal year 2023 effective October 1, 2022.
I offer a motion that we approve C and D.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A and B?
No, sir. C as in cat.
Oh, C and D.
D as in dog.
Okay. Okay. Well, I put this on here because, you know, it looks like we're going to go to the no new revenue and the proposed budget will be reduced by, I believe, $12 million because the known, the proposed budget was at .4835 and the, it looks like we're going to the no new revenue. So I was looking for things that were not in elected officials' budgets that we might be able to trim to, for what I think is going to be a budget tightening. So that, and these were four positions that were not under elected officials. They're new positions that are, that were funded and I'm okay with whatever we do. I know I talked to Trudy about the warehouse manager. I think that one was not going to be actually utilized until January because it's too late in the year for the November election to be able to utilize it. The positions would stay whether we, I'm not advocating that we pull, pull the positions out of the budget. I was just advocating that we might need to take a look at where we hold up, freeze the funding for the positions and, and then we'll take a look at it kind of when the dust settles on, so that we won't have people being hired until we kind of see what's going on.
And I understand that and can agree, I am in agreement that we will have to make some cuts and there are going to be some deep cuts, but I do not think it would be in the best interest of Brazos County for us to cut a system analyst for our IT department and the senior service manager for IT with the cyber, the cyber activities, the threats that we have, the possibility of threats. I think we need to strengthen our IT department and prepare for the future. The future is not far away in that, sir. So I'd like to see these positions held. I know that Eric Caldwell, our department head, is very knowledgeable and he has done a fantastic job with our department in IT since he came on board. He needs our support. We are asking a lot of this department and to cut this department at this time would not be in the best interest of IT or Brazos County.
Okay.
Judge, can we take A, B, C, and D separately?
I think we can. I think that'd be fine, so.
Is that a motion? Because my motion is to approve C and D.
Approve C and D. Well, I'll second C and D.
Okay. Motion made, seconded to approve the freezing of C and D. That really doesn't eliminate those positions out of the budget. It freezes the money. We'll take a look at even those positions over the next few months and see whether they're actually, you know, what the need is. It's, but for right now, the motion is to do C and D, but would not include A and B.
A nor B.
Yep.
Okay. Y'all got that?
So you want to vote on C and D?
Yes, that's what I, y'all, I just asking y'all.
We do not have a vote on C and D yet.
Right. Okay. Motion is, we've made the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. So the motion carries to include C and D in the freezing of those two positions.
And then for A and B, I want to vote no, that we don't remove those salary benefits and operational costs for positions A and B.
So.
That's my motion.
My motion was not even considered.
Oh, okay.
But we definitely want to fund this.
Absolutely. So I'm voting not to remove them. Not to remove A and B.
Right.
Okay.
That's why we approve C and D.
Yep. Do we need to vote on A and B?
I mean, I'm okay with voting. It won't, it will leave them as is in that proposed budget.
And that's the intention of my motion.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay, well, we'll move on then.
Okay.
Fifteen is request for the approval of Brazos County Sheriff's Office to grant exception for the county rehire of former employees and retirees policy.
Move approval? Second, ma'am.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 16 is request approval from budget officer for payment authorization for Matrix Technologies in the amount of $420 for the fiscal year 2022.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 17 is request from the district attorney for the following personnel changes with effective date October 1, 2022 due to the victim assistance coordinator grant being denied. This request will decrease, will decrease the grant fund in the amount of $92,620 and increase the general fund by, by the same amount. And it's to move the victim assistance coordinator, victim assistance grant position 4B 0472-1 from Fund 3,000 to grant.
From 30,000.
Excuse me, you're correct. Fund 30,000 to grant fund 1,000 general fund.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners Court, I just wanted to take a little note that this position was funded in the previous years from the grant.
Right.
Knowing that this grant was going to let us know after the adoption of the budget, we kept it on the grant side just in case, hoping they would donate funding. Since they were denied, this position will have to be transferred to the grant, to the general fund. Going forward, these are the positions that we'll need to look at if they're needing to stay in the budget because of where the funding is coming from. So that will be noted for 23, for fiscal year 24 to look at. Sound good?
Good.
It doesn't sound good, but that's the way it is and we accept.
Yes, ma'am. We have to accept it for now. And what the transfer is, every year we transfer a certain amount to help fund the grant 100%. And so this transfer is going back to the general fund to support this position this year. Moving forward, we'll have to find the funds.
Well, I just am reminded that because of the budget shortage, we are not able to do, to provide services as we have in the past. Grants are cut, funds are cut, and Brazos County is making some cuts where needed, not, not that we want to, but where needed. We have to.
Yep.
Okay. Did, tell me, did we vote? Okay. All right. Number 18 is approval requested from sheriff's office to accept FY 2022 enhanced collaborative model task force award and request delegation of authority for reporting to the auditor's office.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 19 is request from sheriff's office to accept the Homeland Security Grant 4438601 in the amount of $388,789.05 to help fund the Real Time Intelligence Center.
Move approval? Second, ma'am.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 20 is consider and take action on an interlocal agreement between Texas A&amp;M University for reimbursement of transportation services provided by early voting.
Move approval? Second, ma'am.
Motion made, seconded. I think we've got Ashika Shaw?
Ishika.
Ishika?
Yes.
Shaw? If you want to speak, come on up.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for listening this morning. The students of Texas A&amp;M appreciate your consideration in funding our transportation to City Hall for voting. I spoke with Transportation Services yesterday and from my understanding, the county is currently planning to fund 36 hours of early voting transportation. However, we calculated based on student classes and the fact that it's midterms and also that there's not really any parking at City Hall. I drove past there this morning and I could count the available spots on my fingers. So we calculated that we would require buses for a longer period of time and it'd be difficult to determine which three days would be best for the shuttle to run. The shuttle buses are not only for the voters that do not have vehicles, but also it's in the best interest of city traffic because having students drive around in circles around Texas Avenue trying to find a parking spot, especially since without the buses, we would have to leave after our classes to head to the polls, which would be around 4:00 p.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. traffic is terrible. So just considering the amount of parking available at City Hall, I think it would be best if the city could consider finding room in the budget to fund longer hours of the buses. I'm not sure how much leeway is in the budget, but the maximum amount would be appreciated. We calculated that 115 hours would be a good amount of service to accommodate the various class schedules of students and also the fact that it would encourage students to take the buses rather than drive to City Hall themselves. And that would be around $15,303.50. So whatever the county can provide would be greatly appreciated because us students will do our best to fundraise the remaining amount. Thank you for your time and hopefully we're able to get some shuttles to City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve the interlokal between Texas A&amp;M.
That's correct.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 21 is renewal of field agreement with Texas Wildlife Service Program for rodent and pest control from various dam structures in Brazos County.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 22 is approval of the following community support contract for FY 2023.
Move approval, A through E? Second, ma'am.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 23 is award of bid CIP 22-527, rough terrain forklift recommended award is KMC equipment.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 24 is award of bid CIP 22-555, security key management system recommended award is KeyTrack.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
And Commissioners and County Judge, at this moment, this project was awarded for FY 23, $67,000. The award came back at $86,564. For it to be approved, I need direction on where would you like for the extra funding to come from to support this expense?
It's our custom to take it from contingency bond.
Yes.
Then we would keep.
I just, you know, wanted to.
And we appreciate that. We need to know.
Yeah. Expenses of the county are going up, there's no question.
Exactly.
And moving forward, more things will be brought to attention regarding things that are over budgeted to get power approval.
And we appreciate that, too.
Thank you, Nina. Appreciate the job you do.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 25 is permission to advertise for bid 23-024 asphalt oils and emulsions.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 26 is approval of contract 23-066, system agreement with Guardian RFID.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 27 is permission to advertise RFQ CIP 23-558 Brazos County Administration Building feasibility study.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Charles.
I don't know, I don't know if y'all have gotten to actually read that RFP, but we made some assumptions in there and so I wanted to make sure that the court was comfortable with those assumptions for the scope of work. So if y'all are, if y'all.
You want to, you want to kind of share some of those assumptions?
I can. I can. Primarily for the, the area for the training area that's the current or the former sanctuary would be the training area, we've assumed. And again, the architect will help us with this, but multiple training spaces, including one for larger audiences to make it acoustically pleasing, as well as smaller training rooms. One would be outfitted to accommodate computers for software or hardware training and so forth, much like the RMS that the sheriff's department's doing now or whatever. And then other breakout rooms or what have you to accommodate, again, different multiple training scenarios as needed by the different departments. The other piece of that is a separate component of that would be for the north wing and that, again, based on our assumptions and all, would be for the HR department that's in need of additional space to outfit that area for their use. Again, we would, we assumed that there would be an area for them to do training or orientation in, as well as accommodate their offices and room for additional growth.
Okay. I think we discussed those and it sounds very familiar.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Thanks, Charles. Did we, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 28 is approval of contract 23-560, Texas Voting Service for General Elections.
Move approval? Second, ma'am.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 29 is accept of special warranty deed for .163 acre of land right of way and .166 acre of land right of way for a public utility easement and a .531 acre of land for temporary easement for improvements to be made on Stausland Road, site located precinct 1.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 30 is request permission to enter private property owned by Glenn and Danny Page on Farrell Creek Road. County will repair the bridge scouring and improve drainage, site located precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 31 is request permission to enter private property owned by Charles Theopolis Brown located on Dela Love Road sites will clear brush around a 90-degree curve for better sight distance, site located precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 32 is request permission to enter private property owned by Douglas and Lisa Leopold, 8093 Grassboro Road to remove dead tree that is protruding into the county right of way, site located precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 33 is acceptance of special warranty deed from William V. Milburger and Brenda Milburger for .109 acre of land to be used on improvements of Carter Lane, site located precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 34 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval, A, B, and C?
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve A through C. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 35 is Commissioners' Court minutes for the following dates.
Move approval, A through L?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 36 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY 21/22, budget amendments 50.01 through 50.06 and budget FY 22/23, budget amendments 1.01 through 1.23.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 37 is Personnel Change Status.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve A and B. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number 38 is Payment Claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 811-7979 through Claim Number 811-8254 and Claim Number 9005912 through Claim Number 9006005.
Move approval?
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 None motion carries. We will skip down to number 41 is an acknowledgment of FY 22/23 Budget to Actuals by Fund as of October 4, 2022. That's an acknowledgment. Number 42 Juvenile Directors Report on Detention Population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We presently have 46 juveniles in detention, 36 males, 10 females. We have 24 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. 43 Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Chief.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning, we have 655 inmates, 560 males, 95 females, and we have 44 on electronic monitor with 10 pending.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Chief. Number 44 is Announcement of Interest Items and Possible Future Agenda Topics.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on our absent colleagues that continue to put a strain on our financial condition of the county. And while the taxpayers are paying their salary, Commissioner Aldrich is at Disney World. I think I would, they requested a Zoom and I would have appreciated them zooming in and I'm really disappointed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, hey, did you talk to that?
Number 45 is Call for Citizens' Input and Our Concerns. Patrick Giamaba, of course. Is he there?
Patrick Giamaba, 213 Fairway Drive, Bryan, Texas. We've run across a problem with the Mills on Wheels. They want to sell their building or something. They're having a lot of problems. Is there any way that the county can help them out?
You know, this is public input. We're not supposed to respond. You can ask a question, we just can't respond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, there was one other issue about the, about the school bus bond.
I believe that's a city issue.
That's B I S D.
Yes.
Yes, that's not here.
That's, they're dealing with the city of Bryan on that, not the county.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. And there was one other issue with the public park land and that's city of Bryan also.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, thank y'all. Thank y'all for what you did.
Well, I want to say thank you for your concern.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And again, the Mills on Wheels, that's, you know, I heard that the county could actually step in and help them out some. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other citizen input or concerns? Hearing none. We will move back up to number 39 and convene an executive session pursuant to the following. Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties Disponed and/or Dismissal of General Manager of Brazos County Fair and Expo. And then B would be a Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties Disponed or Dismissal of County Personnel. And it.
HR?
Okay, yeah. Commission Court, HR was an attorney's sherrill and it's 1033. Is anything else that we need? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we're coming out of executive session. It's 11:10. There's no action to be taken from the executive session and then going back up to number three, four, and five, since we didn't have four in attendance, there's no action to be taken with those and we'll probably have them back on the agenda next week.
Move to adjourn.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.